Good evening. I'd like to call to order this meeting for the regular meeting for the York County School Board for January the 27th, 2020. And although our newest board members participated in our annual meeting, our work session this past week on the 13th of January, I want to welcome them to our first regular meeting. And it's Mr. Mark Schaefer from District One, and Ms. Laurel Gerrots from District Three, and Shawn Myatt from District Five. So, welcome.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're off to an exciting new year, new start to the new year, and I hope everyone's having a great week. We're coming to the close of January and starting into February. And I'd like to mention, Dr. Shandor, that we may skate January with no snow days. Maybe I shouldn't have said that.
You shouldn't have said that.
Okay. I'd like to read the mission statement for the York County School Division. The mission statement of the York County School Division is to engage all students in acquiring the skills, knowledge, and knowledge needed to make productive contributions in the world. So, I'd now like to ask our pledge leader, Brooke Burke, to step forward while I'll read a little bit about her. So, Brooke Burke is a model student at Bethel Manor Elementary School, and she demonstrates daily her commitment to academics, as well as her dedication to be a positive role model within the school. Brooke is captain of the Safety Patrol Squad at Bethel Manor, and she arrives early each day to complete her duties and never hesitates to help where it's needed. She keeps her fellow students safe when they arrive at school, and it always speaks with kindness to some of the more energetic students with running feet. Brooke is also well-known for her bright smile as she greets all those who enter Bethel Manor, and she helps to manage and support the team of 20 safety patrolers and demonstrates daily her high level of personal responsibility. As a student, Brooke is a high achiever, determined to do her best. She is often completing work that is above and beyond expectations, and loves to take on challenging tasks. She never hesitates to help her peers in class and is kind and polite and a friend to each and every student in the room. In her free time, Brooke loves to play with her younger sister, Brianna, who also attends Bethel Manor Elementary School. She adores her dog Midnight and enjoys relaxing days on the beach with her family. She can often be found drawing in her free time, at which she is very talented, I hear. As you can imagine, Brooke is ideally suited for her dream career as a babysitter or a teacher. So, please stand as Brooke leads us in our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Brooke. So, now, we're going to move on to our awards and recognitions. As we do with most of our meetings, we start out with that part first. And as a reminder during the break, there will be an opportunity to take pictures for all the award recipients up here at the front. So, we'll take a break in between after we do all the awards. So, we're going to start with our Seniors of the Month, and the following students are recognized for their achievements. And from Bruton High School, Mr. Schaefer, you have the first.
Yes. I have Mr. Charles Perry. He's with his mom tonight. His mom's name is Kimberly Perry.
If I could stand up?
Yes. Charles Perry is Bruton High School's January Senior of the Month. Charles is described by his teachers as a creative, dedicated, and driven student. Charles always desires to pursue opportunities that will allow him to experience something new. He takes great pleasure in experimenting and challenging himself with new learning experiences. He is committed to his school as well as community organizations. Since Charles' freshman year, he has earned the academic highest honors award. He has served as a treasurer and secretary of the National Honors Society and has membership in the Key Club, Triumph Music Honor Society, Math Honor Society, and the International Thesbian Society. He has thrived in numerous leadership roles, as he served as a president of the Class of 2020 during both freshman and sophomore years. He is also the French horn section leader, as well as a brass captain. Charles is a gifted musician and has been recognized as the number-two high school jazz bassist in Virginia, as well as one of the top high school hornists in Virginia. He earned a chair in the French horn section of the Virginia Regional Orchestra and has also been accepted into the Virginia State Jazz Ensemble, where he was one of only two bass guitar players in the ensemble. He is an experienced band and solo bagpiper, and is an accomplished composer, producer, and multi-instrumentalist and recording artist. His musical talents are astounding. Charles also enjoys working as a junior interpreter, joiner at Colonial Williamsburg. He began working at CW as a volunteer and has demonstrated such unwavering dedication and trust that he was promoted to the position of a paid junior apprentice. He is also a member of the Williamsburg Pipe and Drums since the sixth grade and now is being assigned to numerous solo performances. Charles also competes at several regional bagpipe events each year. Charles is overjoyed to attend Shenandoah University next fall to major in music production. We look forward to continuing to celebrate Charles' success in all of his future endeavors. Mr. Charles Perry.
So, our next Senior of the Month is from Grafton High School, Mr. Higginbotham.
Yeah, it's my pleasure to welcome Serena Olson. If you can stand up, along with Mom and Dad, Amy and John Olson, and Brother Isaiah and Sister Ellie. You get to stand up, too. Grafton High is proud to present our January Senior of the Month, Ms. Serena Olson. Serena is a skilled musician, skilled athlete, and an academic scholar. Ever since her freshman year, Serena's schedule has been filled with advanced courses and balanced by her passion for music. Serena is ranked in the top 15% of her class with a GPA of 4.3. She has been a part of our band for all four years of high school and is a participating member of the marching band. She has earned the honor of being in both All District Band and All State Band. She serves as the section leader for trumpets and is also a member of the Senior Regional Orchestra. Her musical talents don't stop with band, as she is also a trained pianist. She plays classical piano and gives lessons to future musicians. Her musical talents continue with singing, where she is a soprano who received first in district and fifth in the state. She has made All State Choir and was a part of the Senior Honors Choir. Serena has been a part of Grafton's musicals, including The Sound of Music, and was just cast as Mabel in Pirates of Penzance. You can also find Serena at Grafton Middle School, where she helps teach two classes, one of which is music, right? Of course. Serena is a member of the Grafton soccer team, where she uses her athletic skills. Her leadership at school is visible as she serves as the SCA Secretary and previously served as junior class president, as well as vice president in the Musical Honor Society Triumph. Serena gives back to her community through her work in the Special Olympics Club and the National Honor Society, as well as performances at our local nursing homes. Serena enjoys writing music and is a self-proclaimed ping-pong enthusiast. She plans to attend college after graduation, where she'd like to pursue a degree in music education at either Utah State or BYU. One of Serena's favorite memories at Grafton High School is being named the Homecoming Queen, which allowed her to march with the band in her dress instead of the usual uniform. Serena serves as a role model for all, where her actions model both respect and integrity. We are so proud to recognize Serena as Grafton's Senior of the Month. Congratulations.
And our next Senior of the Month is from TAB High School, Mr. Myatt.
Absolutely. I'm delighted to introduce Brianna Macias. Where's Brianna? Please stand. She's accompanied by her father, Saviano. I'm also going to give honorable mention to Mrs. Christie Macias and your little sister Lily, too. T. Macias, right? Brianna has been an outstanding ambassador at TAB High School as a varsity volleyball player for the past four years, where she has served as a team captain for three of those years. Brianna has helped lead the team to two consecutive state final games and has been named the Class Three Region A Player of the Year, as well as First Team All-State for the past two seasons. Despite her achievements on the court, though, Brianna is much more than just an athlete at TAB. As an excellent student, Brianna has made her mark in the classroom, where she ranks in the top quarter of her class and will graduate with honors this spring. She has completed seven advanced placement courses while maintaining superb grades. In addition, Brianna is a member of several honor societies, including the National Honor Society. She serves on the Student Advisory Council and is active in several student clubs. However, none is more important than Brianna's involvement in Key Club, where she serves as a board member. Volunteer work in the community is also very important to Brianna, and she manages to fit in as many hours as possible despite her very, very busy schedule. Brianna is defined by hard work and her care for others. She gives her very best in the classroom, on the volleyball court, and in our community. She is a vibrant part of the TAB student body, and Brianna consistently exhibits positivity and a genuine concern for others. Her determination to succeed has been an inspiration to her friends and teammates alike. Brianna is an exemplary citizen at TAB High School, and we are so proud to present her as the Junior, or excuse me, as the January Senior of the Month. Again, congratulations, Brianna, and thank you for your leadership and your exceptional personal example.
And our next Senior of the Month from York High School, Ms. Gerrots.
Thank you very much. It's my honor to honor Skylar Haskell. If you would stand with your family. She is here with Mom and Dad, Michelle and Dave, and Sister Carly, and then also Grandfather Wayne Guy. York High School is proud to announce Skylar Haskell as our January Senior of the Month. Skylar is an amazing young woman and a leader amongst her peers. Academically, Skylar has challenged herself and performed well over the years. Due to her success, she holds membership in Mu Alpha Theta, the Science Honor Society, the Spanish Honor Society, and the National Honor Society. During her freshman year, she won first place at the York County Science Fair and placed second at the Tidewater Science Fair. She also received American Society of Civil Engineers Award. Skylar is a dedicated athlete and is involved in many extracurricular activities. She has been a member of the Varsity Cross Country Team, Varsity Indoor Track Team, and Varsity Outdoor Track Team since her freshman year. She's had the privilege of being selected for All-State three times and All-Region four times. Being involved in athletics year-round can be difficult, but Skylar has always persevered and remained focused. Skylar serves as the Student Council Association Class Treasurer, the PTA Association Secretary, and a church youth leader. Each role has caused Skylar to grow as a person by forcing her to step out of her comfort zone. Skylar has completed numerous volunteer hours through her church and has made a meaningful impact in the community. Skylar, congratulations on being selected the January Senior of the Month.
All right. I'll give Mr. or Dr. Shandor a minute to get down front. But we're going to move on to our Student Service Awards. And our first Student Service Award is Ella Rivera from Bethel Manor Elementary. If she could come up with her principal, Ms. Christina Wagner. Ella Rivera is the perfect example of a student at Bethel Manor who has demonstrated extraordinary leadership and service to others through character, collaboration, and citizenship in her curricular and co-curricular endeavors. Ella has shown a passion for expanding the boundaries of learning by being selected in Bethel Manor Elementary STEM Team Club. Her consistent demonstration in perseverance and creativity led her to also being selected in the Summer STEM Program offered to York County students. In addition to being a participant in the STEM Club, Ella was also selected as a member of Bethel Manor's Drama Club. Outside the classroom setting, Ella and her family are familiar faces within the community of First Presbyterian Church in Hampton. Ella's soothing vocals can be heard as part of her worship band, and her commitment to this group has also led to other singing engagements, such as singing the National Anthem at the Peninsula Pilots Game. Ms. Rivera is also passionate about helping those in her community. For the past three summers, Ella has participated in No Kid Hungry Lunch Program. The program helps to provide meals to students during their time away from school in the summer. She has also traveled to Navajo Nation, Arizona, on a mission trip to work on creating and maintaining sustainable food sources for members of that community. Ella also makes her appearance known as a student athlete. You can often find her dominating the tennis courts at Huntington Tennis Center. She is also expanding her talents and currently exploring field hockey. Ella Rivera is the perfect example of a student whose influence and achievements have embodied the highest ideals of character, honor, and integrity. Congratulations, Ella. And our next Student Service Award from York River Academy, Mr. Schaefer.
Aiden Lures with his principal, Walt Cross. It is with great pleasure for York River Academy to announce Aiden Lures, a sophomore, as our Student Service Award recipient. Aiden is characterized at school by his positive attitude and strong work ethic. He has maintained a GPA of 3.4 while being involved in service-oriented programs at YRA and in the community. Aiden has been an enthusiastic and active member during his first year with the YRA Greenhouse Team. In addition to his dedication to maintaining the plants in the greenhouse and Virginia native habitat, Aiden has demonstrated service to the team through his engagement and execution of a York River Academy Greenhouse-sponsored field trip for fourth-grade Grafton-Bethel Elementary School students. He demonstrated patience, understanding, and excelled when teaching the elementary school students through lessons that he helped create. Aiden has also served as a representative for our school on recruitment trips to York County middle schools. Outside of school, Aiden plays travel soccer and volunteers at his local church. His involvement in church includes singing in the choir, organizing youth group activities, and working with preschool students in Sunday School. Aiden is a hard-working young man who genuinely enjoys providing service to our school and community. We are pleased to commend to the community Aiden as our Student Services Award recipient for 2019-2020.
And now, we're going to move into our Community Volunteer of the Month. Ms. Gerrots.
Yes. Katie Burrell, come on up. And Ms. Chrissy Wagner, would you come up with her, please? Katie is joining us from Bethel Manor Elementary. When Katie Burrell and her family moved to Virginia in 2013, I'm sure she did not expect to still be here in 2020. When Bethel Manor needed a new crossing guard, she thought it was a volunteer position and did not expect to get paid. She also didn't expect to become a vital part of the PTA's success and eventually the PTA president for the 2019-2020 school year. Bethel Manor is very lucky that these things have occurred as they did. Katie relocated to Virginia as a military spouse and immediately looked for a way to get involved. For almost six years now, she has been keeping Bethel Manor students and parents safe as our daily crossing guard, rain or shine. All of our students live within walking distance of the school, and about 300 students walk home daily. Katie also helps out by directing families to expedite the pickup process at TAB Middle School as their crossing guard. In 2017, Katie stepped into the communications chair position, running the Facebook page and assembling the newsletter for Bethel Manor's PTA. Later that school year, she filled the vacant vice president position, supporting her team in even more ways while still running some of her favorite events. Katie stepped up to chair the PTA movie nights and organized the school's first silent auction, raising over $3,500. She has also supported other event chairs at Back-to-School Night, Talent Show, and Teacher Appreciation Week. She even convinced her husband to be the full-time bingo-for-books caller. That's what you do in PTA, convince. Currently, Katie is serving as the PTA president and is always giving her time to her team or the school as soon as she clocks out from her crossing guard duties in the morning and afternoon. On a normal day, she spends anywhere from two to four hours a day doing activities such as helping teachers at Bethel Manor or supporting PTA chairs, plan events, all while still managing communications with parents and teachers. Katie is also helping out her husband's military squadron by supporting the unit's spouse group. She reaches out to new spouses to make them feel welcome in the unit and organizes spouse-only get-togethers. Katie is more than deserving of the York County Volunteer of the Month Award, and we are so grateful to have her as part of our Bethel Manor family.
So, next, we have our York Foundation for Public Education presentation to our students who are awarded tonight. So, Mr. Schaefer.
Yes. Congratulations to Brooke Burke, a fifth grader from Bethel Manor Elementary School, for reciting the Pledge of Allegiance at tonight's school board meeting. We would also like to recognize tonight's Student Service Award recipients. Ella Rivera from Bethel Manor Elementary School, and Aiden Lures from York River Academy. We also congratulate our Seniors of the Month. Charles Perry from Bruton High School, Serena Olson from Grafton High School, Brianna Macias from TAB High School, and Skylar Haskell from York High School. Special gifts from Cookie Text and Edible Tweet are being presented on behalf of the York Foundation for Public Education in partnership with their donor, Jeannie Bioka. There, I got it. I got it. Got it. Yes. Of Cookie Text and Edible Tweet. A Walmart gift card is also being donated by a foundation supporter. Presenting this gift to you tonight is Ms. Mandy Sharp, York Foundation for Public Education Board Member.
Congratulations. All right. Right. Next, we're going to move on to our Accent on Academics and give Dr. Shandor just a second to get back up to the top here. All right. Dr. Shandor, are you ready to share information on Accent on Academics?
I sure am. Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Good evening, board members. For this evening's Accent on Academics, McGruder Elementary School will be presenting Gentleman's Prep Club. McGruder's Gentleman's Prep Club is designed to teach interested fifth-grade young men about the importance of citizenship, etiquette, and character. Such students learn from their school club sponsors, as well as leaders in the local community that spend their time volunteering as guest speakers and role models. Mark Kirk, principal for McGruder Elementary School, will now come forward to introduce tonight's presenters. Mr. Kirk.
Good evening, School Board Chair, Mr. Richardson, members of the board, Dr. Shandor, and other members of the YCSD community. McGruder Elementary School is very proud to share about the Gentleman's Prep Club this evening. And at this time, I'd like to introduce several members of the club and our club sponsors. First are our cosponsors, Craig Reynolds and Michael Holly. Next, we have three students who are currently at Queens Lake Middle School, who were in the club last year in fifth grade. First, we have Aiden Banano, Jalen Griffin, and Isaiah Randall. And we also have three current members who are in the club currently. First, we have Caleb Deneen, Markeith Johnson, and Micah Keys. And they're a little nervous tonight.
It's all right. So are we.
The MES Gentleman's Prep Club is making a very positive impact in supporting the first goal of the YCSD Strategic Plan, which calls for students to consistently demonstrate growth and excellence in the skills and knowledge needed to be productive citizens. As we're all aware, the importance of strong role models in the lives of young students is critical toward their future success and development. This club has introduced fifth-grade boys at McGruder to several positive examples from within the school and community, including Dr. Shandor, while teaching them about the importance of character, teamwork, and other life and citizenship skills. I've had the opportunity to observe the impact of the club, both at McGruder and other schools, of which Mr. Reynolds and Mr. Holly have served with me. I've seen the positive impact that it's had, not just on the culture of the fifth grade, but also with students as they move on to middle school, which is why we have the guys here tonight. It is my pleasure at this time to introduce you to Michael Holly and Craig Reynolds, who created and currently sponsor the club.
So, hello. I'm Craig Reynolds, and it's a pleasure to have the opportunity to share about Gentleman's Prep Club this evening. Mr. Holly and I started the club as a form of outreach to our fifth-grade boys to help them feel connected and to become respected citizens and gentlemen in the community. We share with students that a gentleman is well-mannered, polite, intelligent, witty, talented, modest, well-dressed, well-groomed, and culturally aware. The hope is that our fifth-grade boys involved in the club will serve as role models for younger students within the school building, as these guys have. We meet during lunch on the first and third Wednesdays of each month, and any interested fifth-grade male student is able to attend after sharing the information flyer with parents. The only requirement for that group is that the participants have to wear a shirt and tie, or a collared shirt to the club sessions. We have received generous donations from staff members and the community of dress shirts and ties for any students who may need them.
Good evening. My name is Mike Holly, and during the club meetings, we touch on a variety of topics connected to etiquette and citizenship. These topics have included demonstrating appreciation for others, showing passion for life, communication with others, teamwork, leadership, and practicing good etiquette and manners. The etiquette lessons focus on areas such as being polite, respecting our elders, removing your hat indoors, opening doors for others, and practicing a good handshake. While Mr. Reynolds and I have led the majority of the club meetings, we have also have been honored to have several guests, speakers from the community. For instance, players and coaches from William Mary's Men's Basketball Team have talked to the group about appreciating others, while Dr. Shandor visited and shared about teamwork and leadership. A lot of mentions of the Pittsburgh Steelers as well during that talk. We wanted to also share that the club students will be given the opportunity to volunteer in K through two classrooms every other week, once a week during the year. During this time, they help mentor young students by reading to them and supporting them in math and other various activities and subjects. They also dress for success when volunteering. While we can talk longer about this topic, I feel that our students can do the best job of telling you more about this program and what they have learned and its benefits. So, first, I will call Aiden Banano.
Hello. My name is Aiden. I am currently a sixth-grade student at Queens Lake Middle School, and I was a member of Gentleman's Prep Club at McGruder last year. I thought learning how to tie a tie was helpful because it made me feel more responsible not having to wear a fake clip-on tie. Also, getting dressed up with my peers seemed to make everyone act a little nicer. I liked how it was a special time just for us during lunch and not during class time or an after-school club. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Jalen. I'm also a current sixth-grade student at Queens Lake Middle School and was a part of the club at MES in fifth grade. Gentleman's Prep taught us how to be respectful young men. We dressed up in a shirt and tie and met during lunch. We learned how to shake hands, tie a tie, and speak directly to someone. We had guest speakers and played games. I enjoyed Gentleman's Prep so much that I wish we had it in middle school also.
Hello. My name is Isaiah Randall. I am currently a Queens Lake Middle School student and a former McGruder student. I really enjoyed being a member of Gentleman's Prep. I liked coming to school dressed up. My favorite event was when my pastor at New Zion Baptist Church, Dr. Robert Whitehead, came as a guest speaker.
So, we also wanted to share this year that two of our fifth-grade colleagues at McGruder, Veronica Hodges and Karen Malloy, recently started a girls' group, a fifth-grade group girls' group called Girls with Pearls. And Pearls stands for Passion, Empathy, Awareness, Respect, Leadership, and Support.
And, sorry. And as you can see, they had their first initial interest meeting. They had a packed room filled with girls who were interested in learning about these values. We're always looking for guest speakers. It would be interesting to meet in with either of these two clubs, if you guys are available. It would be interesting to meet in with either of these two clubs, if you guys are available, or know someone who are live. We greatly appreciate it.
Okay, as Mr. Holly just concluded, anybody in the community who's interested in serving as a guest speaker or just coming out to be a part of the club, I know these guys really appreciate it, and they learn from people. And we encourage you to go to Engaged In on York County website. But also, before we conclude, we do have something for our School Board members and Dr. Shandor, because we'd like to encourage you to come and be a part of our club. So at this time, we have ties for School Board and Dr. Shandor, and also a bracelet from the Girls Club for Ms.
Well, thank you, Mr. Kirk. And I really especially want to thank the sponsors of the club. What a great program. Thank you. Thank you, that's wonderful. What a wonderful program to bring to our school and to our children, so it's great. Any questions or other comments from Board Members?
I just want to say, if you know how to tie a tie at your age, you're leaps and bounds above a lot of other people. So that's really great.
So how many students do you have in the program this year?
I would say about 15 to 20 regularly attend, but I really appreciate, and we have three here.
Yeah.
It's a very faithful group. They're coming every week with their ties on, so probably about 15 to 20. And we really see the return academically. I think that's what's neat about the teachers, that of those, I mean, the three that were here last year, but of the three that are here this year, we see the return, and they're bought into their academics as well as the club.
That's great. And to the young man who said he wished you had it at Queens Lake, find yourself a teacher there and put a bug in their ear, get one started.
Absolutely, definitely.
Yes, it's an awesome program, and I would imagine that they are setting the example for the rest of the students there at McGruder. Especially being the 5th grade, they're the big kids on the block. So it's really awesome.
They are.
Good job. Thank you again, thank you so much. And our next presentation is Read Across America, but I'd like Dr. Shandor to share a few comments as they come up.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. I'm going to ask Ms. Carol Bauer, teacher from Grafton Bethel Elementary School, and she has some special guests with her this evening. They're going to come forward and share information pertaining to Read Across America.
So good evening, I'm excited here because I have some students here from Grafton Bethel. I believe, School Board Members, you do have something that I gave you that's red and white and striped. Tonight, we have some students here who would like to help kick off Read Across America. Students are Ada Bong, Kaylee Faison, Sierra Telkon, Malani Lozagla, Daniel Kramer, and Jason Kramer, and they're here to tell you about their love for reading.
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you, York County School Board and staff, for recognizing the National Education's Association's Read Across America, this program that encourages caring adults to read in our schools. After all, you are never too old, too wacky, or too wild to pick up a book or to read with a child. York County has celebrated reading and Read Across America in many ways over the last 23 years. This year, we want to encourage everyone to read books with different heroes, heroines, different situations, and different cultures. You can read silly books that make you laugh, but you can also read a book that makes you think and wonder, like Refugee, which is about three children from three different time periods looking for safety. My favorite part was when all three of them got to safety. Do you have a favorite book, Daniel?
My favorite book is The Titanic Lost and Found, because I like the part where Robert Ballard found, I like learning about the part where Robert Ballard found the Titanic. And this is my brother's favorite book, The Wild Krats.
In this girl, in this book, Girl Rising, it tells how every girl has a story and how education can change lives, like Malala and Greta are changing the world and how I can too. Reading with a child can change lives. I want to encourage you to volunteer in our schools and read with the child.
Books can help you make connections. I was very excited to see this book, Ada's Violin, because my name is Ada and I play the violin, but I was surprised that there is an orchestra of recycled instruments in Paraguay. I learned that children and musicians in Paraguay repaired instruments with X-rays and recycled trash to make their orchestra. This is a true story. I like reading stories about music, and I like reading stories when I learn about Calling all parents and volunteers, York County Schools needs your help to meet their goal of inviting 100 volunteers to read with students at every school to celebrate Read Across America. So here's what we want you to do. Call your local school to volunteer to read and make your plans now to read with a child.
Yay, good job.
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation, and I would encourage everyone, especially those with children in school, to go out and volunteer and read. I read to several classes a year during this time in this program, and I know a lot of our Board Members will as well. So thank you, appreciate that. Great job. So I'd just like to mention before we take the short recess that when we come back, we have a Capital Projects Report. Thank you. And then we'll go into our Citizen Comment period. But right now, we're going to take a short recess so our Board Members can meet some of our award recipients for this evening. Meetings called back to order, and we're going to go into unfinished business, and I believe we have none, no other unfinished business. We're going to go into Presentations, Capital Projects Report, Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Board Members, I'm going to ask Mr. Mark Sheehart, Associate Director of Capital Plans, if he'll please come up, and he will present this month's Capital Projects Report. Mr. Sheehart.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, and Dr. Shandor. Here's your Capital Projects Report for the month of January. I'd like to cover three projects this evening. The first of these is Grafton High School and Middle School. This is the HVAC replacement and the main offices reorientation there. As you know, this last summer, the contractor was in there replacing, they replaced the heating and air conditioning equipment, the boilers, pumps, and all the equipment on the high school side of the building, with the exception of the high school band room, which has a separate heating and air conditioning system. And they also reoriented the main offices, so they now face the entrances and created security vestibles at those two entrances. This is a current project update right now, as electrical contractors are continuing to work in the building after hours. They're working on the middle school side now, getting it ready for the summer, the work this summer. In their work here, they've replaced all the lighting in the cafeterias, they've replaced the lighting on the third floor. The third floor is a mechanical mezzanine, and mechanical equipment's all up there, so they've done all that work away from the students, and they've got that done. They've done most of the disconnect switches, which is, switches that take power to equipment, and then this next summer, they will be replacing all the HVAC equipment on the high, on the middle school side, as well as the band room only on the high school side, to replace the HVAC equipment there. So the next project is Dare Elementary School. This is the breezeway enclosure there. The speed has really picked up at this project. They've completed the replacing the concrete floor in the project. The contractors are working on the block walls now. They were expecting to install the steel joists tomorrow, but they had, the crane was free today, and the steel contractor could get up there today, and so they installed the steel joists today. They are in the process of determining the new substantial and final completion dates there. Because of power lines, Dominion Electric Power Lines, Dominion Energy Power Lines that ran underneath the building where the building was going to be, we had a delay in construction until those power lines were moved and then the contractor could go forward. This is a picture of what the breezeway looked like on December 16th. You see here, there's no floor here in this portion of the building. Where I was standing at when I took the picture, there was a concrete floor, but this portion is where those electric cables were running underneath, and they could not pour the floor until the cables were removed. So that was on the 16th of December, and this was here in January 15th. So you can see there's a lot of activity going on. You can see all the scaffolding here and the block walls going up on the outside of the building. Those block walls now are completed on the outside of the building, and this morning and today, they were working on the interior block walls. This is a picture of the back of the breezeway here. On the left-hand side is the extend center. The back there, you can see the gymnasium, the Dare Elementary Gymnasium, and where the blue door is, is the back of the Dare Elementary School. And this is back in December 16th when I took this picture. And then again, you can see a lot of work is being done there. They've got the concrete block walls going up. This is January 21st, which is last week, and you can see the openings there for the windows and the doors. They still have to put the brick facade on here, but they got it up tall enough so they could put the steel joists in today. The last project I'd like to talk about is Coventry Elementary School. This is the addition classrooms there. The original portion of the building, we replaced the air conditioning there a few years ago, but we didn't have the funding to replace all the air conditioning, so we're going back this summer for 12 classrooms and then replacing their air conditioning systems. We've signed a contract on November 25th. We had a pre-construction meeting this last Wednesday there at the school, and a contractor will be, is scheduled to begin demolition June 15th, which is the Monday after the last week of school. You can see there the substantial and final completion dates. And that's my last project for this evening. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions, Board? No. Thank you very much, Mr. Sheehart. Appreciate that presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Sheehart.
All right, next, we're going to move into our public participation at Board meetings. I'm going to call up anyone who's signed up to speak on the list that we have. There are two opportunities to speak this evening. The first is for general topics, and the second will be specifically relating to our operating budget, and there'll be a public forum on that. So the School Board provides a public comment period for the public to comment on topics germane to the business of the School Board. The School Board expects each speaker to be courteous, modeling for our students, and when we can respectfully disagree with other's views, we ask that speakers address their comments to the entire School Board and not to individual Board Members, nor to the Superintendent or staff member or the audience. Speakers will present their comments from the podium. Each speaker may speak up to three minutes. There's a timer visible to the speakers from the podium, and the speaker should conclude their remarks when the red light comes on, and the timer will begin after you state your name and address when you come up. So the first one is our first speaker we have tonight, and it's Ms. Evans. I'm not, how do you say the first name?
Toni.
Toni Evans, okay, thank you very much. If you just state your name and address, and the timer will start.
Okay, Toni Evans, 104 Goose Creek Road. Good evening, my name is Toni Evans, and I am the President of Hampton Roads Hurricanes Travel Baseball Organization. We are a nonprofit 501(c) organization that was founded over 20 years ago by Brian Kersey. We are based out of York County and are primarily made up of York County players. We are submitting an unsolicited PPEA that would provide a 30-by-80-foot hitting facility to York High School, excuse me. This would be a fully engineered metal building with two full-size batting cages capable of handling up to four teams at the same time. The building would feature two roll-up doors that excludes plumbing and HVAC. It would be equipped with high-efficiency, low-power LED lighting and an exhaust fan. It would include exterior lights that would be over each of the doors. This would ultimately increase exterior lighting on the eastern side of the school. We feel that this would be an asset to the school and the division as a whole. At the end of the day, it is essentially a very fancy shed with only, with the only true permanent structure being the foundation. The building itself, while engineered to withstand a Category 2 hurricane, is bolted down to the foundation. While many of its kind have been, have, I'm sorry, while many of its kind have continued to withstand the test of time, it could easily be removed if necessary. A few of my fellow Board Members will appear after me and hopefully mitigate any outstanding concerns that the School Board may have considering this project. Your time of consideration is very much appreciated. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. So our next speaker is Thomas Evans. Just state your name and address first, please.
Thomas Evans, 104 Goose Creek Road, Seaford, Virginia. Hitting facilities like the one that we are proposing are becoming more and more common across high schools today. Virginia Beach has been outfitting all of its high schools with hitting facilities for the last 20 years. Lately, Suffolk and Norfolk have been following suit. We see this as an opportunity for York County School Division to jump-start a process that could lead to each of its high schools having their own hitting facilities over the course of simply a couple of years. The Hampton Roads Hurricanes Organization was able to raise enough money to fund a hitting facility over the course of one year. I state, I emphasize that because that was, for the most part, two teams. That's 24 kids. And so in 365 days, we've raised enough money to fund a whole hitting facility. If you're not familiar with our parents, which I'm sure you are, when I say our parents, I mean our York County parents, we're very, you know, competitive, and the minute that one school has something, everybody else jumps on to make, to donate enough money for their school to have something, you know, something similar. So rather than seeing this as creating inequity amongst schools, we consider this as a catalyst that would see York High School serve as the testbed for the development of their own hitting facility free of taxpayer dollars. This will provide a dedicated resource for four teams, you know, two softball, two baseball, to go when there's inclement weather, but at the same point, it's also providing additional resources for four soccer teams. Right now, you have eight teams. Anytime it rains, they're all fighting for the ability to use that space. So the high schools that are equipped with drop-down cages usually don't have the opportunity to use them. They don't have time. That's what we've gotten from two different athletic directors. Yeah. So this would free up the space for the soccer team and free up space for the baseball and softball teams. At the end of the day, just as Ms. Evans said, our organization has been based out of York County for the last 20 years. Our players predominantly come from York County. We feel beholden to offer this opportunity to a York County high school. But at the end of the day, we're here to support our players and to represent our players. So if the York County School Division ultimately decides that it's not interested in receiving a fully funded hitting facility, then ultimately, we're not going to have an option but to look elsewhere. We have had a few exploratory discussions with other local school divisions, and they are, they've expressed interest. But at the end of the day, we think this presents a win-win opportunity for the school division that will see its student athletes become more prepared at a minimal expense to the county. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So our next speaker who signed up is Matt Puckett.
Good evening, Matt Puckett, 218 Pasture Lane in York County here. I'm currently one of the Board Members, as well as the 8U, the 8-year-old baseball coach for the Hampton Roads Hurricanes. Currently, our team right now is practicing in the spring and the summer at a York County baseball field through the Parks and Rec, and then in the wintertime, we practice at a elementary school gym. So our insurance is up to date and good through the York County Parks and Rec, as well as York County School Division, because we already use these facilities. All of our volunteers are currently subject to background checks in order to keep our children safe, as well as our other volunteers safe. We want to make sure everybody is abiding by our thing, our policies. Currently, we plan to implement this procedure throughout. Anybody that would be in our hitting facility would have to have the background check, and we will continue that into our outdoor season so that our coaches and everybody that's around our children are, obviously, their number-one goal is to keep our children safe. We have previously confirmed with the York County, New York High School, that their current system of cameras and stuff like that will cover the area that we're looking to build this facility. It'll already be under video surveillance, but we also currently also have our own camera system that we would be willing to install should it be required, as well as Ms. Evans had mentioned, there'll be lighting on the exterior of the building and things like that to keep the facility safe. We want to make sure that this facility is both functional and safe for our kids, as well as anybody at the high school that would be using it through the soccer team, softball team, baseball teams, et cetera. And I guess the most... And I guess the most important thing to me is that I teach our youngest kids, I coach through the, and help teach them how to become good baseball players as well as good citizens. Most of our guys will be able to use this facility for the majority of their life as far as their baseball career. With the older teams that have been there, they fundraised a lot of money to get to use it for a few years and then hopefully make the high school team. With my eight-year-old guys, 10 of them are on the team, are all York County kids that will be able to use the facility throughout middle school, throughout high school, as they go up through our baseball program as well as the York program. So we feel it's a great opportunity to get a facility built that will help our young kids continue to perfect their skill as well as provide a safe place for practice. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So our next speaker we have is Sharon Thomas.
Good evening. My name is Sharon Thomas. I live at 115 Montgomery Lane, Seaford, and I have been a county resident for over 45 years. I've been in the construction business for over 25 years as a project manager for a local home builder. I believe the Hurricanes organization has found a reputable company that utilizes all American-made steel that is backed by a one-year workmanship warranty, a 10-year panel warranty if it should chip or crack, and a 20-year warranty against rust for the frame. Metal buildings of this caliber can be found all over the peninsula. I have a friend who is the athletic director at First Colonial High School in Virginia Beach, and these metal buildings have been the basis for all their indoor hitting facilities at all the schools. Some of the buildings are 20-plus years old and they are still in great shape. I have an email from her that I would like to submit to the board if possible, if I can give copies, that she wrote backing her, thank you, her experience with the metal buildings and how she has pioneered helping other schools get those buildings for their schools as well. In our prior building, the Hurricanes organization maintained a cleaning schedule. In addition to weekly light maintenance, there was a deep clean every month and teams rotated on the schedule throughout the year. If the building is approved, the Hurricanes organization would take on this responsibility throughout the year so there is no cost or responsibility required by the school division. We believe we have set up a long-term plan for future interior or exterior maintenance. Our organization will still be doing a yearly fundraiser and the monies raised will be placed into an account that would be used for any maintenance needed on the interior or exterior of the building. Our organization already has the necessary equipment to furnish the inside of the building with the nuts, screens, and other equipment that would be needed for the baseball and softball teams. In conclusion, we feel based on the quality of the materials that will be used, a reputable company with a long-term warranty in place and a longstanding local organization that takes pride in their name, it is the perfect package to start something that could inevitably lead to more opportunities for York County to only better their sports program. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. So our next speaker is Christina Abel.
Hi. I am Christina Abel and I live at 612 Crown Point Drive. My son's father grew up in York County and attended York County schools and played Little League for the county and currently lives in the Grafton area. He wanted the same for our son Blake. Blake has been playing York County Little League since T-ball and is now entering his last year of Little League. He attends Grafton Middle School and loves it as much as any kid can love school. He has been playing on the Hurricanes team for a few years now and I joined the board to be more involved and was so excited that we were going to build a facility. The hitting facility would really help these kids develop in these important years, build on these skills, and hopefully use them to play for college teams. Blake's dream is to play for Virginia Tech. To continue where Sharon left off, during the spring season, the drop-down cages in the schools are in locations whose use is desired by other spring sports. If we build our facility, it would allow four school teams to get work in when the outside fields are not available, but also free up other spring sports like soccer for space where they would no longer have to share. A similar situation to Seaford Elementary where the York Seaford Bulldogs maintain a concession stand and utility shed on the school property. We believe that the building, this facility, would benefit York County and allow York County to stay as competitive as the schools on the south side and surrounding areas of Virginia. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So our next person we have signed up, there's actually two on the same line, Andrea and Joel. I'm not sure if I'm saying the last name correctly. Lonzaga? Are they here? Okay. We're going to move on. The next person signed up to speak, Pam Pouchot.
Good evening. My name is Pam Pouchot. I reside at 103 Kimberly Court, Yorktown. I would like to welcome this new board and have high hopes that you will accomplish much. I also hope this board will consider term limits and after two terms will welcome someone new to fill your seats. In the meantime, I'd like you to consider holding town halls at least four times per year in your districts. Engaging the community should be a goal for all of you. I have a concern I'd like to address tonight. My great-granddaughter attends kindergarten at Tab Elementary School. The classroom she is assigned to is an interior room with no windows or skylights. I find this very troubling that a child can spend six hours and 40 minutes in a room with only artificial light. I realize that they go to the cafeteria, which does have windows, for lunch, and on good weather days, they may go outside for a short period of time, but this is not enough. I can't imagine what the school division was thinking when they built and later renovated this school. Children need sunlight. They need to be able to look out the window and daydream, which encourages creativity. Any child or teacher who may be suffering from seasonal affective disorder undiagnosed is doomed in this room and others like it. Why are such classrooms allowed to exist and what can be done to remedy this abhorrent situation? I look forward to hearing your responses. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pouchot. And I don't have anyone else signed up for general topics, so we're going to close that public hearing. And we're going to open the public hearing for our operating budget. But before that, Dr. Shandor, do you have any comments to share on our operating budget?
I do, Mr. Richardson. I'm going to ask Mr. Bill Bowen, Chief Financial Officer, if he'll please come to the podium and make some remarks related to the FY '21 operating budget. Mr. Bowen.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor, Mr. Richardson, members of the board. This public forum tonight provides another opportunity for the York County community to comment or offer suggestions, recommendations on our FY '21 budget. As you know, in November, we held two community budget meetings, one at Queens Lake Middle and one at Grafton Middle. And I'll say the one held at Grafton Middle was one of the best we've had in three years we've held our community budget meetings. The superintendent's budget, oh, I'm sorry, let me step back. We've received comments and suggestions from our staff, from our building administrators, and from our executive team. We're currently working through those recommendations and suggestions right now. The superintendent's proposed budget will be presented at the work session in February, on February 10th. At that time, the state will have not completed its state budget, so we'll have opportunities probably throughout the spring, once we have a final state budget, to amend our budget and once we transfer that budget over to the county. So I'll just leave you with those comments.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bowen. So I'm going to open up the public forum for the operating budget and the first individual signed up to speak is Melissa Wade. You state your name and address and the timer will start.
My name is Melissa Wade. I live at 111 Hidden Lane, Seaford, Virginia, 23696, and I am president of the York Education Association. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you about the future budget for York County School Division as I follow up from when we spoke in December and then previously November about what the York Education Association feels is important to consider. Guarantee, number one, guarantee an annual step movement and increase York County School Division salary scales to be competitive. Virginia ranks 32nd in the country on average teacher pay and the average Virginia teacher pay is $8,500 below the national average. York County prides itself with its highly qualified schools that have high test scores and low incident rates. It's not enough to be the average in the area if we're going to attract and retain highly qualified pairs, bus drivers, custodians, and teachers. We need to be the trendsetter, the division that all teachers want to join. Bus drivers want to move to, pairs want to teach in. Just like our housing market, we need to stand out as the number-one school division to move to. Number two, ensure professional treatment of all York County School Division employees. Multiple climate surveys conducted by the YEA and the YCSD administration have shown that the YCSD staff are dedicated to the work they do and in addition, they want administration to be intentional and seriously consider their efforts, suggestions, and input as well as respected and contributing partner in the many daily and overarching decisions that impact their student and working conditions. Teaching is more complex than ever before as educators evaluate student growth and achievement, implement social and emotional learning programs, and plan learning for the increasingly diverse student population. Classroom teachers need time to process, collaborate, and adjust instruction to meet the needs of students and sometimes teachers need additional educators in the room to help prevent injury to students and educators alike. We ask that faster protocols be put in place to ensure safety of students and educators and we also ask to allow silent witnesses when disciplinary actions are taking place to ensure fairness and professional treatment of educators. Protect teachers' time to plan. That's the third one. Virginia Administrative Cove Title VIII, Education Agency 20, State Board of Education, Chapter 131, Administrative and Supportive Staff staffing requirements. Each elementary classroom teacher shall be provided at least an average of 30 minutes per day during the student's school week as planning time. Each full-time middle and secondary classroom teacher shall be provided one planning period per day and equivalent is defined in 8 VAC 20-131-5. Unencumbered of any teaching or supervisory duties, our elementary teachers, I'll hold off for the next person for that one. Thank you very much.
You finished with your comments?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm out of time, so yes, sir, sorry.
Thank you. So next I have Delilah Johnson.
Delilah Johnson.
Gotcha. Thank you.
216 Ashton Drive. Our elementary teachers are overwhelmed and unheard. A large majority of elementary educators have their planning time filled with meetings, whether it is for accommodation meetings with parents, special reading meetings, or the building mandated PLC. Secondary educations have two PLCs per month while some elementary education have four, most of which falls during their planning time. The York Education Association recommends to cut down to two per month and give teachers the time they need to plan for instruction. There are additional recommendations, but the goal is to meet the state code of the basics of teacher working conditions. Thank you for your time and I hope you consider the previous three areas when making your budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your comments. So last person we have to speak on the budget is Pam Pouchot.
I don't have truly, oh, Pam Pouchot, 103 Kimberly Court. I tend to ramble, so I apologize because I don't really have anything written for this. But I know in a lot of other communities, every child is given an iPad or some form of computer, portable computer, to use for the area that is their own. York County does have a lot of high-income people, but not everybody. We also have quite a few trailer parks. A lot of families can't afford to have the latest in technology. I'd also like you to talk to the county about a countywide Wi-Fi program so that every child could have Wi-Fi in their home and aid them in doing their homework and studies. I've spoken about this before, but we're spending an awful lot of money on hardening our schools and I have to wonder, studies have shown that hardening a school does not make it safer because this student is the one that's going to shoot up the school and they come into your school every day. You don't keep them out. I'd also like to see more preschool programs. Early education brings in more results than remediation at a later date. And one last thing, again, is back to my great-granddaughter. I just, I'm not that involved in the schools anymore, but her classroom is relatively large. We used to have 17 or 18 kids in a kindergarten classroom, but apparently there's not enough children to be considered making another class. Therefore, it's just an overcrowded, dark dungeon classroom. I'd like to see that go away. And again, fund education the best you can and if necessary, beg the Board of Supervisors, but get your money. I'll be there for your joint meeting. I'd like to see what they have to say as well. And keep up the good work.
Thank you, Ms. Pouchot. Thank you for your comments. So we have no one else signed up to speak on the budget, so I'm going to close that hearing. Comments? And we're going to move our meeting along and move on to matters by board members/committee reports. So our board had a retreat recently and there was some discussion about all of us are representative on some type of committee as board members and we really want to make sure we present that information, get that information out, what we're doing on those committees. And we haven't all met on our committees. I think the only one so far is Mr. Myatt has met with his committee. You've met with yours, that's right. So we had two. My committee that I'm on has not met yet, but during their comments, matters by board members, we're going to allow them, if they'd like, to make a short briefing of their committee report, just a hot topic, you know, comment. And then eventually we'll have that stuff scanned and it'll be able to be viewable on board docs. So we're going to start with Mr. Higginbotham to share remarks for matters by board.
Sure. Just so people are aware, I'm going to be the representative on the Health Advisory Committee for York County, the school board member for that. I did want to highlight a couple events that happened in York County going all the way back to December of 2019. It seems like so long ago, but it was just a little bit more than a month. York High School had the IB diploma and pinning ceremony and I was able to go to that. Ms. Geraltz was there too. It was a really neat event. As the seniors who just graduated last year, they don't find out at graduation if they got their IB diploma. They find out in the summer. So they bring them back right before the winter break and they award them their diploma there. And that's also the pinning for the new class, I believe it's sophomores who get pinned? Yeah. Juniors, I'm sorry.
Juniors.
Yeah. So the juniors get pinned for their work as they go for the next two years. And it provides an opportunity for those juniors to talk with the recently graduated students to learn a little bit more about it and I think it was eye-opening to some of them to realize how much work it was because it's, when I was told the requirements, it was surprising at how much those IB students do to earn that diploma. So I want to congratulate all those students who just recently got their diploma for IB and issue a good luck and work hard to the current juniors who just got pinned. Some people aren't aware, but at Grafton High School, for the last 25 years, the first Saturday of January after we returned, they host all district band auditions and they have about 1,000-plus students who show up to audition between middle school and high school from everywhere, from Williamsburg all the way out to Gloucester and Matthews and Hampton, Newport News, Pococin, everywhere in the district. And it's not just the students, but all the parents are in the building and the whole building is taken over for that event. And I just want to thank the principals, the APs, the athletic directors, the band directors there, the choir directors there, and all the teachers as they open up their rooms for that. The rooms get moved around for the audition space and then get put back together. And all that's done by parent volunteers from Grafton and student volunteers from Grafton. So I just want to thank everybody for opening that up for, you know, 25 years now. I think since the complex has been open, they've hosted it. And then lastly, I had a great time with the fellow board members at our retreat in Charlottesville for our training with the Virginia School Board Association and with the Executive Board of YCSD. I learned a lot and I'm excited about the work that we have ahead of us and I'm ready to roll up my sleeves and get going. So thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Higginbotham. Next, Ms. Geraltz.
Hello. Thank you so much. The IB pinning ceremony was great and I loved having those kids come back. I guess they meet during the day and have that conversation about what the work was like. So it was great to see those kids. I know for a fact that there were a couple of kids who were thinking about dropping out of IB and after that conversation decided to stay in it. So that just shows you that those conversations really meant something to people. Some of the other things I've been out doing, I went to the York Middle School Band Concert. It's been a while since my kids weren't in band, so that was really, really great, just packed house. I mean, there was absolutely no seats in there. It was great. Everybody was shuffling along the wall. I got to go to the York County PTA meeting, but in a different role this time. So that was great just to be able to have conversations and I encouraged all those PTA leaders to reach out to all of us and just let each of us know what's going on in their community, what things they're planning because it's a great place to talk to parents and see what the kids are doing. I have been asked to be on the Special Education Advisory Council, so we had our meeting last week. I'm excited about what's going to happen in that group. A lot of very passionate parents who are ready to get to work and I'm excited to be a part of that. And then last week, Ms. Nagel from Seaford Elementary invited me to be a part of their new signs for excellence and we kind of did a prize patrol. We went out into the community. They had selected some kids. The kids had no idea and it was knocking on their door with pom-poms and bells and the kids put the sign in the yard, but really they just told them, it was not kids that were on honor roll necessarily, but just kids that had made great strides. And that was just really, really great to be a part of. I know that's going to carry on every couple of weeks with some kids and I can't wait to go back and do that. Tomorrow, I'll be at Seaford and be doing the principal for a day, so I'm excited about[1799.51] that. And then, just really grateful for the patience that you guys have shown and the training that we've gone to and all of the questions that you have answered for us. So, I'm very excited to get to work with all of these people. I think we just have a great common goal, to do what's right for the students, and I'm excited.
Great. Thank you very much. And next, Mr. Myatt.
Yeah, sure. I'm going to echo what Ms. Gerrots had mentioned with regard to the transition. And the transition for us started right after election results. So, I want to thank Mr. Richardson and Dr. Shandor for access to the division leadership team, their transparency in sharing data with us, and bringing us along as we transition formally into work sessions and then regular meetings. Real quick, as Mr. Richardson mentioned, one of our primary responsibilities is board representation on standing committees. So, I am, as was mentioned, the board representative for Career and Technical Education. That advisory committee met the middle of this month at TAB High School. It was absolutely superb. We had excellent representation from local and regional business and other CTE partners and academia and training organizations locally. We discussed governance. We discussed organization, brief discussion on some additional goals. But more importantly, we were able to visit with students, personal presentations from DECA students, which were excellent there at TAB High School, and then we visited a couple of classrooms to observe CTE lessons. So, hats off to the team, particularly Mr. Paul Rice and the TAB team, for allowing us to have access to the students in the classrooms to observe lessons. Real quick, again, another primary responsibility or roles, engagement across the community. Mr. Schaefer and I had the opportunity to represent the board at the NAACP Afro-Academic, Cultural, Technical, and Scientific Olympics, or what's known as AXO. So, AXO is a year-long achievement program for high school students. It's competition-focused across 32 categories, including STEM, humanities, performing and visual, and culinary arts. It was an award ceremony. All of our high schools were represented from grades nine through 12, to include York River Academy. Obviously, the awardees and their achievements were absolutely superb. It's a dynamite program, and the awards session coincides with Black History Month, and also the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday, and the awards presentation, AXO very much follows in his legacy. So, I know, speaking for Mr. Schaefer, we had an excellent time and great interaction. And then, finally, real quick, a shout-out to the Bethel Manor Elementary School Eagles. I will be there tomorrow, principal for a day. They promised to take it easy on me, despite Dr. Shandor's desire to have me worn down. But anyways, I'm looking forward to being inside the building, and they've got a great team there. I'm a former military family member, and I know how special, particularly an elementary school, was to us. When you arrived at a new duty station, you went to the new elementary school right off the bat. So, that's a special team there, and I'm looking forward to spending some time with them. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Myatt. And next, Mr. Schaefer.
Yes, we had a wonderful time at the NAACP AXO luncheon. The achievements that those kids did was just... I mean, it was just unbelievable. When we had grade point averages that you're talking about, 4.7, 4.8, there was one lady there with a 4.87, and we got to go with Tony Valdo and Candy Skinner, and we shared the table with them, and they were catching us up to speed on the whole involvement of York County in with the NAACP. And I was just proud to say that there was so much representation from our school district in that organization. It was truly a good time. Now, I also got to attend a few basketball games. Bruton High School is... Well, we're in a rebuilding year right now, okay? That's the way we're going to say it. And I had to see them lose to York High. But anyway, I did get to go to the Queens Lake game, where it was so neat, because here's a middle school, they're playing their final home game at Bruton High School. Now, what happens is, is that they advertise it real well and everything, and there was a turnout. I mean, there was such a turnout that the concession stand ran out of food. How many times have you ever seen that truly happen? Not only that, but at halftime, Bruton had to bring out the other half of the bleachers because there was so much overflow. So, Jennifer Goodwin just did an awesome job advertising it. We had a good time, and Queens Lake boys won, the girls should have won, almost did. But it was an awesome evening. It really was. Then, I actually got to be taken around. Dr. Shandor took me around to all four of my schools, and I tell you what, it was like old home week. I saw teachers that I haven't seen for a few years. I saw Mrs. Marowski at Waller... I mean, at McGruder, that's been there for 40 years, teaching kindergarten, and she can still get down on the floor and do it, you know? I couldn't do that. But I did tell her. I said, "I remember making ice cream in your class right over there with my youngest about 14 years ago." It was a great time. I mean, we have some just super staff up in District One at Bruton, with Arlethe Dockery in it, at Queens Lake with Jennifer Goodwin, and Tremaine Hopkins over at Waller Mill, as well as Mark Kirk at McGruder. It's just a great, great bunch of people. All the APs, the teachers, everyone is awesome and just dedicated to making York County a success. Yes, and I get to go to McGruder tomorrow and be principal for a day. And I did notice that when I visited Mark Kirk the other week, that he was wearing running shoes as he was there with his shirt and a tie on, so I have a feeling I know how to dress. But we did get to go to the Board and Executive Committee Retreat up in Charlottesville last Thursday and Friday, and I will tell you that we have some of the most dedicated people that are on our executive board of any organization I've ever been involved with. And I've had a number of leadership positions in industry, and I would put this group up against them anytime. But it was just a fantastic time, and we got to know each other. I got to know everyone here, including Sean. We had a good time there. But it was just... The first couple of months here on experiencing the board has just been so eye-opening and just so wonderful, truly is, and humbling, that it's just been a great experience. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. And I'll just follow it up with the IB pinning. The last few that I've been to, even the last one I went to, there was a young man that came back that was at VMI, and his comments were, "The hardest part was the physical part of, you know, doing everything physically you had to do, but academically, everything was a breeze," he said, "because of the IB program. It was just so much easier," and he passed that on to the other students. But we did do a retreat with the board back when there was the closing of who was going to run, and we found out that three of our experienced board members, one with 30 years' experience, one with 20 years' experience, and one with 12 years' experience, were all no longer not running for the board. I knew we would have a brand-new board. So, I approached Dr. Shandor and asked about doing a retreat for the new board members so we could get to know each other, help them in the transition of learning, since they were new board members, and him and his team did a wonderful job. I just... I'm ecstatic of how well it turned out. They worked really hard on their presentations, and we had some good work was done, I think, in that retreat, and to get everybody up to speed. So, thank you to you and your staff for that. So, I'll be at Grafton Bethel Elementary School for principal for a day tomorrow. And something to look forward to in March is our future chefs competition, new board members. If you haven't done that, that's pretty fun. There's stuff we do all throughout the year, but I'll just... I'll keep you updated as it comes on with the good stuff coming, so... But that's one of them. So, we're going to move on to financial matters, and Mr. Higginbotham, you have financial matters this go around.
I do. I'd like to start with the consideration of approval for claims certified for payment, and we have claims certified for payment during the month of December 2019. The significant expenditures for December involved instructional-related expenditures of 300... About $351,000 included payments to New Horizons. Results coaching, global, and creative office furniture for the York High School Learning Commons there. Payments for technology-related items totaled approximately $442,900, including payments to EverBank Commercial for $380,000 for Citrix licensing, Cox Communications $24,300 for internet services, Virginia Business Systems for $17,700 for copier services, and the Computer Discount Warehouse for $20,900 for UPS equipment. The payments related to administration totaled $52,400, including payment to Diction for $16,000 for translating the student handbook, Ve Corp. for $25,700 for workers' comp services in October and November, and Milliman for $10,700 for their actuarial services. Payments related to food service totaled $230,500 for Sodexo for November and December for food service operations. Payments related to our capital projects totaled $487,900 and included payments to Vertex Co. for $435,000 for their work at TAB, Mount Vernon, and Dare Elementary Schools, Hudgens Contracting for $32,000 for the parking lot at York Elementary, Heartland Construction for $20,900 for work at the Grafton Complex, and payments related to operations and maintenance totaling $289,100, and that included the payments to Mobile Lease for $239,000 for the leasing of the mobile classrooms, Dominion Energy for $39,800 for utility services, and Republic Services $10,300 for waste disposal. If we move on to B, we have consideration of approval of financial reports for December of 2019. The significant changes relating to our operating budget for December revenues. The state revenue for December 2019 is up by more than 1.79... No, I'm sorry, 1.7 million when compared to December of 2018. The increase is due to approved state funding increases for fiscal year 20 and increases in our student enrollment. Federal revenue for December 2019 is down by more than $4 million from December of 2018, due to the fact that the federal Impact Aid revenue is not received on any regular or scheduled basis. For our expenditures, we have instructional expenditures of approximately $2.3 million higher in December 2019 than in 2018, and this is due to the increase in instructional and support staff required for growth and the staff compensation increase for fiscal year 20. Significant changes relating to the food service budget for the revenues and expenditures, we have food service revenue from December 2019 that is approximately $257,000 higher for... Then in December 2018, as a result of the increase in student enrollment and participation in the 2019-2020 school year. Food service expenditures are approximately $66,700 higher in December 2019 than in 2018, due to the increase in student enrollment and participation. And lastly, we do have a consideration of approval of the Resolution 20-5, which is a resolution authorizing a specific procurement. Resolution 20-5 requires the board approval authorizing procurements of more than $50,000, and we have one item on this resolution, Dell computers for the replacement of 50 units, which totals $59,100. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the financial reports as listed for December 2019 and to approve Resolution 20-5.
Thank you, Mr. Higginbotham. Is there a second to that motion? Is that two separate... Should be two separate items, shouldn't it? Approval of financial matters and then the second one, the resolution?
I don't think it's on our thing right here, so...
Okay.
Then, I make a motion to accept the financial reports as listed for December 2019.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Gray?
Okay.
Whenever you're ready.
Is it coming up for y'all to vote?
It has not popped up yet, no.
Okay, a motion was made by Mr. Higginbotham and was seconded by Mrs. Gerrots to approve financial matters as listed. Motion passed five to zero.
Perfect. So, is there a second?
Motion.
Motion to approve the resolution?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve Resolution 20-5.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. And if you need to do a count on that one, if you don't have it listed?
Okay. Who seconded it?
It was Mr. Schaefer seconded.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Motion was made by Mr. Higginbotham and seconded by Mr. Schaefer.
To approve the resolution?
To approve the resolution. The vote passes five to zero.
Perfect. Thank you, Ms. Gray. We're going to move on to our consent calendar next. Is there anything we need to pull from the consent calendar from the board? I didn't hear anything during the day today, so...
No.
Is there a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar as listed?
I move that we approve the consent calendar as listed.
I second.
Ms. Gray?
And you may not be able to see this from home. We were hoping it would show up on the screen, but we get it on board docs, it shows up on our screen, how we can vote. That's why we asked Ms. Gray to reiterate how the vote ends up being, because you can't always see that yet. But we're working on some technicalities of getting all that so everybody can see.
Okay. A motion was made by Mrs. Gerrots and seconded by Mr. Myatt to approve the consent calendar as listed. The motion passes five to zero.
Thank you, Ms. Gray. So, now we have a... We're going to move on to our proclamation for Career and Technical Education Month for February of 2020. Dr. Shandor, do you have comments?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Career and Technical Education Month underscores the value of programs and classes in preparing our students for careers of today and the future. We are thankful for our YCSD teachers, business community, and partner programs, which provide high-quality instruction in this area.
Thank you. Is there a motion and a second to approve the proclamation?
I move that we approve the proclamation for Career and Technical Education Month.
I second. All right. Thank you.
Okay. A motion was made by Mr. Higginbotham and seconded by Mr. Myatt to approve proclamation for Career and Technical Education Month, February 2020. Motion passes five to zero.
I think that was Ms. Gerrots that made the motion on that.
Was that? I'm sorry about that.
Can you make that correction for us?
Yep, got it.
Thank you. So, next, we have the approval of a proclamation for National School Counseling Week, February 3rd through 7th, 2020. Dr. Shandor?
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. National School Counseling Week focuses attention on the many contributions school counselors make to our schools. Comprehensive school counseling programs address students' academic and social welfare, provide much-needed resources for students, parents, teachers, and administrators, which ultimately support student achievement. We have an amazing team of school counselors in YCSD, and we appreciate them for their many contributions they make to our division.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. I'm in need of a motion and a second to approve the proclamation?
I move to approve the proclamation for National School Counseling Week.
And I'll second.
Okay. A motion was made by Mr. Higginbotham and seconded by Mr. Schaefer to approve a proclamation for National School Counseling Week, February 3 through 7th, 2020. The motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. And next, we're going to... We're looking at approval of a proclamation for Read Across America Day, March 2nd, 2020, which we had a nice presentation on this evening. Dr. Shandor?
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. March 2nd is Read Across America Day in celebration of Dr. Seuss's birthday, which promotes reading and adult involvement in education through the school division. We encourage staff members to go out in our schools and read to our students as a way to recognize this important event and to engage with our students. You also heard this evening about, we will take as many volunteers as we can get to come and read to our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion and a second to approve the proclamation?
I move that we approve the proclamation for Read Across America Day.
I'll second.
A motion was made by Mr. Schaefer and seconded by Mr. Myatt to approve a proclamation for Read Across America Day, March 2nd. Read Across America Day, March 2nd, 2020. The motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. Next, we're looking for approval of Resolution 20-06, Resolution of the County School Board of York County, Virginia, to approve the Division Superintendent's Fiscal Year 2021 Capital Improvements Program, which we saw at their last work session. Dr. Shandor?
I don't have any additional comments related to the CIP. If you remember, quite a few months ago, Mr. Sheerhart and Dr. Carroll presented the facilities master plan. Mr. Bowen spent the last few months sharing information related to the capital improvement plan. He also gave the Board a brief update at the, your first work session. So I don't have any additional comments.
Great, thank you, Dr. Shandor. Is there a motion and a second to approve the Resolution 20-06?
I move that we approve the Resolution 20-06.
And I will second.
And that's the Resolution of the County School Board, York County, Virginia, to approve the Division Superintendent Fiscal Year 2021 CIP.
Okay, a motion was made by Mrs. Gerolds and seconded by Mr. Schaefer to approve Resolution 20-06, a Resolution of the County School Board of York County, Virginia, to approve the Division Superintendent Fiscal Year 2021 Capital Improvement Program. The motion passes five to zero.
Thank you, Ms. Gray. Our next Resolution 20-07 is a resolution requesting the Board of Supervisors to issue general obligation school bonds for the, school purposes for consenting to the issuance thereof. So, Dr. Shandor?
Yeah, I'm gonna ask Mr. Bowen to come up and make some brief remarks related to this item.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor, Mr. Richardson, members of the Board. This is a resolution authorizing the schools to borrow money for our capital improvements program. This is step one of the process. If the Board chooses to approve this tonight, it'll go to the county for their approval. And then this will trigger the borrowing, which will then allow us to continue with our capital projects.
Great. Any questions? Okay. Is there a motion to, and a second to approve Resolution 20-07?
I move that we approve Resolution 20-07, requesting the Board of Supervisors to issue general obligation school bonds for school purposes and consenting to the issuance thereof.
I second.
Thank you. I was moving ahead, reading.
Okay, a motion was made by Mr. Wyatt and seconded by Mr. Higginbotham to approve Resolution 20-07, a Resolution requesting the Board of Supervisors to issue general obligation school bonds for school purposes and consenting to the issuance thereof. The motion passes five to zero.
Thank you, Ms. Gray. Next, we have the approval of the Board norms and protocols. If people that may have been watching over the last year or so knew that the previous Board had approved norms and protocols as guidelines for the Board to use, and this is a document that we reviewed as a Board during our retreat last Thursday with the VSBA. And our Board, along with Dr. Shandor, shared input, made revisions as a collective unit, and we all agreed on the content. So Board members, are there any other comments on that?
No.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept and approve our Board norms and protocols in a second?
I move that we approve our Board norms and protocols.
Perfect. I'll second.
All right, thank you, Ms. Gray. If you'd poll the Board, please.
Okay, a motion was, sorry, a motion was made by Mrs. Gerolds and seconded by Mr. Schaefer to approve the Board's norms and protocol. The motion passes five to zero.
Thank you, Ms. Gray. And next, we have the discussion of the Quadrennial Review of Section L, Education Agency Relations of the School Board Policy Manual. Dr. Shandor, I'll let you provide information related to that policy.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. I'm gonna ask Ms. Skinner, if she'll please come forward, Chief Academic Officer. She'll share information with you this evening related to this policy.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor, Chairman Richardson, members of the Board. As part of the Quadrennial Review of the Policy Manual, revisions to Section L, Education Agency Relations, this is being provided to you this evening for discussion. This section includes, but is not limited to, relations with private schools, home instruction, charter schools, and agreements with colleges and universities to provide opportunities for student teaching, as well as post-secondary opportunities for students at the community college level. Most of the proposed revisions are a result of the alignment with the School Board Association Policy Manual and do not substantially change practice. Additionally, cross-references to other sections and policy have been added and references to former heading titles have been removed. Here's a summary of the proposed revisions. File LB, Relations with Private Schools, was retained with no changes. Three files were revised with editorial changes only. Those include File LA, Education Agency Relation Goals, File LEA on student teachers, File LI, Relations with Educational Accreditation Agencies. And lastly, there are three files that are revised with editorial and more substantive changes. The first is File LBD on Home Instruction. This includes notification of the availability of AP and preliminary SAT, as well as National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test to students who are receiving home instruction, as well as disclosure of information. File LC, Charter Schools, includes eligibility of children of military personnel, civil rights, health, and safety requirements, student assessment and accountability requirements, compliance with the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, revocation and non-renewal of charter agreements and charter contracts. And lastly, File LEB, Advanced Alternative Courses for Credit, includes agreements for post-secondary credential and certification or license attainment. This policy will come back to the Board next month for the first reading. And do you have any questions for me at this time?
Sounds like it's pretty straightforward with the revisions, so, any other questions?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Skinner, for that presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Skinner.
So no actions needed at this time on that. We have no first reading policies. We're gonna go into second reading policy. We do have an action item, approval of the second reading of the Quadrennial Review of Section A, Foundations and Basic Commitments of the School Board Policy Manual. Dr. Shandor?
There's no further changes since the last time we reviewed this.
Okay. And we just reviewed this again at our last work session as well. So is there a motion and a second to approve the second reading of the Quadrennial Review of Section A, Foundation of Basic Commitments of the School Board Policy Manual?
I move to approve the second reading of the Quadrennial Review of Policy Section A, Foundations and Basic Commitments of the York County School Board Policy Manual.
Second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you. Ms. Gray, if you'd poll the Board.
If you would just give me your verbal vote, it's now allowing me to open it up online.
Okay, not a problem.
Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
Mr. Myatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Gerolds?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
And Mr. Richardson?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Gray. And last, we have the report of the Superintendent, Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. I'll be quick this evening, have just three quick items. First, I wanted to thank our team, Dr. Vladu, Dr. Carroll, Ms. Skinner, Mr. Bowen, Ms. Barry, our attorney who sits silently here at the edge, and then Ms. Goff, our communications expert. Our team spent a great deal of time with our Board last Friday, going through each of the areas that they're responsible for, providing a lot of information related to current topics, some of the work that we started earlier this school year to bring our Board up to speed. Our Board asked great questions during that session on Friday. And then on Thursday, the six of us had a great opportunity to receive training from VSBA. They take you, they take you through a number of exercises through the day for clarity, responsibilities, et cetera. We talked about power versus authority and a number of different, different items. Our team thoroughly enjoyed the experience to spend some time with our new Board members. We really enjoyed, although I did poke some fun at Ms. Gerolds for the number of questions that she asked. However, they were really, really thoughtful questions and we certainly encourage our Board to continue with that. So we really enjoyed our time together. Next, you heard us, heard a few of the Board members talk a little bit this evening about Principal for a Day. That's a program that we started a number of years ago. We will have a Principal for a Day in every school tomorrow. There's one school that we've had a delay. We had some military representation, one of the schools, that person's out of the country, so he will participate when he comes back. It's a wonderful opportunity for, for our Board members, the Board of Supervisors, and a number of our community members and business partners to get into the school and see what it's like to feel like a Principal for the Day. It's not a show, we don't set those things up, so you're gonna get a full experience of what, you know, the bus line looks like in the morning to when the bus line looks like when it leaves, so, and everything in between. So I hope you enjoy your experience. We do have a reception at 4:00 at the Freight Shed, which will hear the experiences from all of our participants. And in closing, I did want to mention, the last week was Virginia Schools Principal Week and I certainly can't let the evening go without saying that we have 19 of the strongest leaders in education in this school division. One of my main responsibilities is making sure I put a really strong principal in every school so that they can attract and keep the best teachers in the schools. So I'm super proud of all the work that they've done and they continue to do. I know the countless hours that they put in, in the evenings and on the weekends for our students and for our community. You had, you got to see a great example tonight of Mark Kirk from McGruder and some of the innovative programs. And those two gentlemen who presented tonight were teachers that he recruited to that school. I'm super proud of both of them. So that concludes my report for December. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Dr. Shandor. And we'll be back for our work session on Monday, February 10th at 6:00 PM. But before that, we will also have a joint work session with the Board of Supervisors at the TAB Library at 6:00 PM. Both of those are work sessions. But enjoy your week, last week of January and have a good evening. Thank you, this meeting is adjourned.